A white called. The ninth meeting of the Mayor's City Council to order. Ms. Varno, please call the roll.
Mr. DeWalt.
Here.
Mr. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yeah.
President Smith.
Here.
Mr. Sitnor.
Yeah.
And Mayor Mo.
I'm here.
All right. Moving on to Agenda number four. For the Mayor and City Council, I'll start with myself. I just want to say congratulations to all the award recipients from the Royal Police Department. They received an award last week. I wasn't able to make it, but I just want to thank you for your dedication and hard work to the citizens of Laurel. I also like to let the mayor know that we're still praying for you and also thinking of you and your family during this time. After burying your mother last weekend, it was a beautiful ceremony. And we just hope that you guys will know that we're thinking of you and praying for you. I want to move on to, I'm going to start with Councilmember DeWalt.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have anything to report tonight, but I'd like to read a letter that I got from a constituent. She's one of our seniors. And she lives down at the Selborn House. Her name is Jessie Eiffel. Can you help us? I live at the Selborn House, 501 Main Street in Laurel. We, the residents, literally risk our lives crossing the street. There are some dim flashing lights at the crosswalk, but too often they are ignored by motorists. In fact, because the stretch between lights on Main Street is long, many motors pick up speed and then have to come to a sudden stop. If they do stop at all, a traffic light, a stop sign or stop sign with bright lights is needed. Furthermore, we cross the street often to patronize the Q Stop convenience store directly across from 501. This store is a convenience for many of the residents who shop for their groceries and supplies there. We do walk slower than other pedestrians, some of us with canes. And when we have to rush across the street, the danger of falling and injuring ourselves is an added prevalent worry. Thank you. And that's from one of our seniors that lived down at the Selborn House, Jessie Eiffel. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Mr. DeWalt, then move on to Councilman Sitnor.
I have nothing to report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Nicole.
Thank you, Mr. President. On April 2nd, I attended Parks and Rec, Tuxton River cleanup. It was nice to see all the volunteers that came out and thank you to the Laurel Rescue Squad for their help walking through the river, pull the trash. On the 7th, I did attend the police awards. That was a really nice ceremony. On the 8th, Friday the 8th, I did a police ride along, learning what our, what our police officers go through every day. It was really educational. I spent about six hours at the police department and in the vehicle. And then on the 9th, I went to the Parks and Rec Extravaganza. It was very brief. I think it was a record three minutes this year with the rain. But it was nice to see all the kids and see all the community involvement. There's a lot of people that just want to come out and get together now that COVID's wrapping up. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Cole. Councilman Mitchell.
Thank you, Council President Smith. This past weekend, we did an expungement clinic partnering with Grace Life Center and Cool Wellness Medical Dispensary. And you know, that was very important because this month is a national second chance month. So it was important to continue. I know that there's been many efforts in the city with expungement clinics. So it's been, it was, it was very promising and it was good feedback. And on the 20th of this month, we will be at Laurel High School, appreciating some of the teachers and great staff that they have. And yeah, I believe that's it.
Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. It is very important for expungements for those who need second chances. So thank you for doing that. And I'll move on to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. I do want to take this opportunity to thank the members of the City Council, the city staff, and many of the Laurel residents and businesses who came out and attended my mother's viewing and funeral. And I just want to thank them on behalf of my father, Bob Mo, and my sister and brothers. So again, thank you all very much for coming out and I do appreciate that very much. The Agus Extravaganza, I did have the opportunity to swing by. I think we had sunshine and we had rain, we had sleet, we had hail. And then it went back to sunshine again, but I think kids enjoyed themselves. Also want to acknowledge and thank the Laurel Lions Club, who's always been out there with their volunteers to help and sponsor this with the Department of Park and Recreation. And I want to thank them as well for their, their hard work. On April the 16th, there'll be an annual e-recycle, annual e-cycle and paper shredding event at the Public Works Facility from 8:00 AM until 12:00 PM. And you will have to show ID in the city. I do have one proclamation and I do have one other announcement, Mr. President. I was going to ask the police chief to comment on as well, but I did have proclamation 2022-6. Whereas the Arbor Day holiday was first observed with the planting more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas trees can reduce erosion to our precious topsoil by, by wind and water. It cuts heat and cooling costs, moderates the temperature, cleans the air, produces oxygen and provides habitat for our wildlife. Whereas the City of Laurel has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting opportunities. And whereas the City of Laurel, Laurel Tree Board will plant a white oak at the, a white oak tree at the Goody Mansion. Now they're for I Craig and Mother Mary's City of Laurel, everybody proclaim April the 29th, 2022. As Arbor Day in the City of Laurel and all urge all citizens to support our efforts and care for our trees, wildlands, and to support the city's community forestry program. Mr. President, the other that I have to comment on is, Police Department's been very busy today. I want to state that there is no active shooter or there has been no active shooter in the City of Laurel today. Social media has put out some comments to that effect. They are working two different incidents right now. And with your permission, I'd like to have the chief at least brief the council real quick and the public because I am concerned about what is being placed on social media. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chief.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mr. President, the council, citizens that are watching, listening this evening. So as the mayor noted, we are currently in the preliminary stages of two separate investigations regarding assaults that occurred within the city today. And both assaults were apparently committed with firearms. One was up in the area of 8th Street, approximately the 600 block. And the other was down the area of the Laurel Volunteer Rescue Squad. The first incident, we revived on scene. We did recover a weapon and the detectives and officers and evidence technicians are handling that case. And a short while ago, we just confirmed that a second shooting occurred down near the rescue squad. And our officers and detectives are following up with that case as well. That was a late reported incident that was reported in another jurisdiction who contacted us. And then we began the investigation into the matter. There is currently no danger within the community at this time. And as the mayor stated, there is not, there has not been an active shooter within the community. As people become very concerned when they hear such things. If that was the case, we would have immediately taken different measures in these and alerting the community and taking different measures as well and helping keep the community safe. These two cases, as I mentioned, appear to be separate and they were contained immediately upon us learning of both incidents. So at this time, the officers and detectives are working very diligently on these both cases. And if the city, if anybody within the city or anybody else has any information they think could help us with this, please contact, contact us over to Laurel Police Department and we'll make sure you talk to the right person. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Is that all, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda item number six, the general public hearing. Ms. Varno, is there anyone signed up to speak?
No, there is no one signed up to speak at this time.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:10 PM and I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:10 PM. Moving on to Agenda item number seven, A. Introduction in First Public Hearing on the Resolution Number 2-22. A resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel to create the City of Laurel Arts Council, PC Fund. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. This resolution was discussed at the April 6th work session. Director Barr, you have the floor.
Or sorry. Well, as you said, this was discussed at the council meeting. And this legislation just allows the Laurel Arts Council to create a fund that establishes their procedures and policies for collecting funding and making expenditures.
Anyone signed up to speak?
No, there is no one signed to speak at this time.
All right. I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:12 PM and I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:12 PM. Second public hearing with possible action is scheduled for the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, April 25th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Moving on to Agenda item 7B. Introduction in First Public Hearing on the Resolution Number 3-22. A resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to establish the City of Laurel Pride Day Celebration Planning Committee. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. This resolution was discussed at the April 6th work session. And Councilman Cole, you have anything to add?
Nothing further to add at this time, Mr. President.
All right. Ms. Varno, is there anyone signed up to speak?
No, there is no one signed up to speak.
Going to open the public hearing at 6:13 PM and I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:13 PM. Second public hearing with the possible action scheduled for the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, April 28th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Agenda item 7C. Introduction in First Public Hearing on Ordinance Number 1997. An ordinance to amend the general operating budget and capital improvement program of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, and to provide an effective date. I read the title into the record for the first reading. This ordinance was discussed at the April 6th work session. Director Taylor, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add, Mr. President. This ordinance just reallocates the ARPA funding into the different categories and it provides funding and savings from the operating budget to the capital improvement program to advance the one and done program, environmental program for the trash and recycling. Thank you.
Ms. Varno, is there anyone signed to speak?
No, there is no one signed up to speak.
Mr. President, could I make a motion on that?
Open the public. Door.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rolls on that.
Second.
I'll second it, Mr. President.
Ms. Varno, you call the vote.
Mr. DeWalt.
Yes.
Mr. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
President Smith.
Yeah.
Mr. Sitnor.
Yes.
You. Now to Agenda item 7D. Introduction in First Public Hearing on.
Mr. President, you got to make a motion to approve it now. We just made a motion to suspend the rules. I make a motion to approve.
Oh, yes, yes. Thank you, Councilman Sitnor. And I have a motion to vote.
I may get to approve what was 1997.
I'll second it again, Mr. President.
Yeah. Varno. Please call the roll.
Mr. Sitnor.
Yes.
Mr. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
President Smith.
Yes. And moving on to Agenda item 7D. Introduction in First Public Hearing on Ordinance Number 1996. An ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to approve map amendment number 925 to construct an additional 61 dwelling units at the properties known as Tuxton Greens located at 14415 Greenview Drive, Laurel, Maryland 20708. Submitted by CS Patuxent Greens LLC and providing an effective date. This ordinance was discussed at the April 6th work session. Director Love, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, Mayor and City Council members. As stated at the work session before, he's the ordinance number 1996. The applicant, as stated, is seeking a map amendment to construct additional 61 units to bring the total for the development to 450 dwelling units, Tuxton Greens Development, from the original final site plan approval of 389 dwelling units. The applicant will be required to obtain preliminary subdivision, amended final site and landscape plan, and final record plot approvals in future planning commission meetings. If I could, Mr. President, the applicant's team is on the call and they would like to address the questions asked by Councilman Cole at the work session and then they will be available for any other questions there. Mr. Ship.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. William Ship here on behalf of the applicant. We do have several members of our team here with us, but they do not need to speak. We're here for, for questions mostly. We certainly went through a presentation the other night. I'm not going to go through all that again, but I did want to follow up on some of the questions. As far as community open space, we're picking up with this new layout about a one acre of additional community open space because townhouse lots don't have as much open space in the backyard as single families. But that creates more usable open space for the overall community. This one acre is in two separate pods that are located proximate to the trail system, which is a good thing. And it's all within the section that we are proposing to revise. The impervious surface area is roughly comparable, actually. It does not increase, but because these townhouses are front loaded, there's more open space and backyard space for the townhouse residents because there are no alleys in this scenario. One other question I believe Councilman Cole asked was a kind of a hypothetical comparison of densities between the proposed community or really the total Patuxent Greens community and the existing neighborhoods that surround us. We subtracted out the stormwater management facility, which are the compensatory storage, which, you know, actually provides stormwater management benefits for the entire watershed. But taking that out, just so you can have kind of an apples to apples comparison with the 389 units right now, that translates into about 100 acres of the development parcel at 3.89 dwelling units per acre. With going up to the 450 units as we've requested, the 100 acres translates into 4.5 dwelling units per acre, which compares to Patuxent Glenn's at 4.96 dwelling units per acre. And then, of course, the condos would be much higher, the villages at Greens of Patuxent is at 10 units per acre. So even with subtracting out the compensatory storage, we remain compatible in our view with the surrounding neighborhood as well. We are really here to answer any additional questions that the council may have. Like I said, I don't want to go through the whole presentation again. I don't want to, but because I don't want to, you know, belabor your agenda any more than necessary. But we are here to answer any questions and we certainly respectfully request approval at the appropriate meeting. Again, not to increase the density over what was originally approved by the council in the original order, which allowed up to 450. But essentially, this is the first step to allow us to go to preliminary plan and, and final site landscaping plan to get from where we are now to the 450. Those reviews will have to proceed should the council approve this action. And there will be full opportunity for public input and review in that process as well. With that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ship. That was very helpful. Thank you for answering my questions.
All right. Ms. Varno, is there anyone signed up to speak?
No, there is no one signed up to speak.
Mr. President. Open the public hearing at 6:20. Going to open the public hearing. I'll get right back to you. Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:22 PM. I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:22 PM. Councilman DeWalt.
This is the reason I want to give you these numbers on the development down there is because I've, I've been with this development even before. As soon as the Laurel leader came out years and years ago about that there was going to be a development. And most of my colleagues aren't aware of a lot of the things that have gone on here. But I promised last meeting that I would give you these stats. And what you have to remember is there's two ways into that development and there's one and a half ways out. And the halfway is Greenview Drive, which goes northbound on 197. So that's what, what you have to keep in mind as far as traffic goes and how many cars are going to be, vehicles are going to be in this development. And like I said last week, the Patuxent Greens is going from 389 to 450 and the 61 added ones are going to be those extra large townhouses. Patuxent Glen is 132 single family homes. The village at the Greens of Patuxent are 156 townhouses and condos. Spring House Apartments is 220 apartments. We then have the development called Lakeview Greens, which is the two five-story buildings. And that, and that's at 14502 and 14504 Greenview Drive. That's going to entail 185 multifamily units with retail units, stores or entertainment on the ground floor. Now, this doesn't take into fact the business office at 14409 Greenview Drive, which is currently has businesses in there and it borders out next to the pole and Cabana. Now, none of those were figured in on my, the amount of vehicles that probably in at one time. And remember, two ways in and one and a half ways out. The total amount of vehicles or units is going to be 1,143. The national average per unit per household is usually around two vehicles. So if you multiply that times two, you're looking at 2,286 vehicles. And in the event of emergency, you're going to have one and a half exits out of that development, one and a half. Now, if the stream or the creek that's right before the entrance to Stewart Manor, 711, on 197, if that floods, then you're only going to have one way out of there and that's going to be Clubhouse Boulevard. Through several of the planning commission meetings that I attended during this whole process, several members of the planning commission did bring about that it's going to be too compact and that we need another way to get out of that complex. So I'm not the only one bringing this to anybody's attention. And so one question I do have is when this, when this project is completed, who will be responsible for maintaining the stormwater management plan and the equipment and the ponds? That's my only questions, other than stating the facts that I have stated, which I feel is a huge safety hazard by having so many of these units. If we get anything like Elicit City got or anything that comes up on us. And remember, this whole development is in a flood plain. I know there's been a lot of mitigating things that have helped with it and things like that. But look at that overlook that the developers showed us last meeting and all those, they, they were supposed to be ponds. Now they look like lakes to me. A lot of that whole development is, is lakes or ponds, which is standing water. And all we need is if we have something wrong with that dam or they have to open up that dam suddenly or we have a natural disaster and we have one, one single accident on one of those roadways coming out or one car that gets stuck in the water or anything like that, and we're going to have a huge disaster. And my only other question for the developer and for anybody, what do I tell one of my constituents that live down there? And they come up to me and say, in the event of an emergency, what do I do? I don't know what their answer would be. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, is, do I have the floor to respond?
Yes.
Thank you. There's a few things included in Councilman DeWalt's comments and I know that he's very interested in stormwater management and in the stream situations, not just in this area, but throughout the city. I know that the city has been engaged in assessment and review of upstream situations with the streams. And we certainly encourage that and support it. I do want to talk about some of the things that we have done within this project. We've retrofitted the four acre golf course pond to become a fully functioning stormwater management facility. Whereas in the past, it just overflowed. Now that stormwater is being managed in accordance with Prince George's County Stormwater Management requirements. And that facility was retrofitted at the cost of $1.1 million. We also installed three state-of-the-art bio-retention facilities at the cost of $150,000. We also installed three state of the art bio retention facilities at the cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've constructed a three submerged gravel wetland facilities that cost a one point four million dollars. And we also have created the forty acre compensatory storage area that cost two point four million dollars. So you can see that the the investment by this project in creating stormwater management compliant facilities where there was none before is substantial. We certainly are doing our part to to control the stormwater that comes into our project. And we've complied with Prince George's County reviews, with the city reviews, and with the soil conservation and even M D E and FEMA. As per FEMA, we've already taken fourteen condo buildings out of the flood plain with the work that we've done already. They've had an issue with having to pay flood insurance premiums for years for buildings that do not flood but are in the flood plain. We've brought fourteen of them out of the flood plain and we are now investing in upgrading the levee at Bear Branch at the cost of one point one million dollars, which we believe will bring even more of those condo buildings out of the flood plain. The development as constructed now is not in the flood plain. That was the whole requirement of the review of M D E and FEMA for this project to even go forward. So we continue to invest in doing best practices for stormwater management. We know it's an important issue. We are picking up the stormwater for that drainage area, which includes the single family and condo neighborhoods around us. That was our requirement. It's not because we're good guys. It's because the project has to comply with the law, and that's what we're doing. And we're happy to do that as part of this development. We think that this development improves the situation in that regard. We also are not aware of any recent events that have caused one ninety seven to be closed from flooding in that direction. But if there were, I know from some of the meetings we had concerning stormwater management with your departments and with representatives of W S C and others that there the city does have an emergency management plan, and I'm sure if there were a true emergency that caused a flood enclosure of one ninety seven, that that would be put into action by the city. We continue to work with your staff and public works folks and others to make sure this project is built safely and efficiently. The project was evaluated at four hundred and fifty units, so we've been transparent about the stormwater management techniques that we've been employing within the fully vetted and reviewed. The engineering has been fully reviewed by multiple agencies, and we will continue to do that through the process that we have to go through with the planning commission, should we be successful. You know, we have the subdivision process and the site plan process that we still have to go through. The question of access and circulation within the project was brought up at the planning mission. There was actually a a continuance of the hearing and we made some changes to the road network within the project to try to ensure that in the event of a accident or some closure of part of the roads within the project, there is redundancy so we can get people out of there. And we think we've come up with safe and efficient solutions, and we look forward to working with your staff to make sure that continues to be the case.
Thank you, Mr. Ship. Our second public hearing with possible action scheduled for the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, April twenty second, two thousand twenty two at six P M.
Moving on to agenda.
Twenty fifth, Mr. President, I just want to clarify, but that's the twenty fifth of April. Is that right?
Uh, the twenty fifth, yes, you're right.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Moving on to agenda item number eight. Bid recommendation, eight A bid recommendation, refuse and recycling container purchase. Director, sorry, Michelle Blair, you have the floor. You're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, as discussed at the work session, this is a recommendation to purchase recycling and refuse containers for single family and townhomes. Also for the A and D and for the inventory software. I believe that all questions were answered at the work session. And I would just like to have the council approval to move forward with the purchase.
Is there any questions from the council? Comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to accept the bid recommendation.
Second.
I'll second it.
Bono, please call the vote.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah.
President Smith? Mr. Sitner?
Yes.
Agenda, agenda item eight B bid recommendation, generator purchase, Guti Mansion. Christina Quanwell, you have the floor.
You're muted, Christina Quanwell.
President, I think you're having problems with her. Probably the C A or the deputy could.
Yeah. Mr. President, this this was an item that was also brought up at the and discussed at the work session. And this is for the generator at the Guti Mansion and recommendation. Is that the Mayor and City Council proved the purchase in the amount of fifty thousand five hundred dollars to Fern Rodkey Electric Incorporated?
Any questions or comments from the council? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to bid, bid recommendation by generator Guti Mansion, Mr. President.
I'll second it.
Bono, please call the vote.
Mr. Sitner?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes. All right. Since there is being no further business to come before the Mayor and City Council tonight, this meeting is adjourned.